Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for being here. This is incredible turnout for our first town hall meeting of 2025. I want to thank the city of Peabody for hosting us. Mayor Bettencourt, we have some incredible members of the Peabody Police Department here helping out. Thank you all. My job is just simply to give a very quick safety and civility briefing. So the safety briefing is going to talk a little, sound a little bit like we're on an airplane. So I want everyone to find the nearest exits. There's two on either side. Please know that the closest exit may be behind you. And there is a flotation device under your seat cushions. On a, that is, on a slightly more serious note, there are a lot of folks here, and there is a lot of passion, and there are a lot of questions, and a lot of things going on in our country, in our world. We want to make sure that as many people get an opportunity to share, to ask questions, to provide feedback as humanly possible. So I ask in advance, and thank you in advance, that we shall all show each other the grace and humanity to allow folks the space to share their opinions and ask their questions, and to allow the congressmen to respond. And with that, I would like to introduce Congressman Seth Moulton.
Hey, Rick, thank you very much. And wow, what a turnout. This is fantastic. This is a time when a lot of people question being engaged in our government. There's a lot of frustration, a lot of disillusionment. And yet this community has shown up to show that we participate in democracy. So I'm honored to be here as your representative. I remind my team all the time that we work for you, not the other way around. And I want to very quickly get to your questions, because that's really the heart of this evening. But let me start by just making a couple of introductory remarks about why I'm here. You know, what I'm, why I'm doing it. One of the frequent questions I get from my friends these days is, my gosh, Seth, like, how do you, how do you put up with this crap? Why do you keep doing this? I'll give you two quick stories. One's about why I started, one's about why I keep doing this. The first is that, you know, I didn't grow up interested in politics. This is not what I expected to do for a job. But I was honored to serve in the Marine Corps. You have four tours in Iraq, and thank you. And there is an afternoon I still remember when a young corporal in my platoon, it's been a tough day, and he looked up at me and he said, you know, sir, you ought to run for Congress someday so that this stuff doesn't happen again. Now, I used a Marine term for stuff, but you know what I mean. He didn't convince me at that moment to run. I came back and went to grad school, like every aspiring Massachusetts politician. I took a job in Dallas, Texas. You know, this is not really where I necessarily expected to end up, but, but I thought back a lot to what Corporal Castro said, and how we need people in our community, in our country, to stand up and serve, to do these tough jobs, especially in tough times. Now, when I think back on the work that I've done over the past nine or 10 years, probably the single bill I'm most proud of is 988, the National Mental Health Hotline. It's actually pretty incredible, the impact that this law has had. It's literally saved thousands of lives. Calls to 988 went up 50% once we got the three-digit hotline. But texts, because you can text 988 as well, and of course, a lot of young Americans like to text. I don't, do you know this, that young Americans like to text? You know, I might start texting in the middle of this. All right. The texts are up a lot more. Any guesses how much texts went up in the first year, 988? 87%? 1,450%, which is an amazing measure of how many people are getting help, especially kids, but it's also a sad measure of how many kids in America need mental health assistance. And something like 90% of calls result in a life-saving intervention. So we're literally saving a lot of lives with this law. Well, I shared these same statistics with a group of middle school students on the Capitol steps one day, and I got a lot of blank stares. Maybe you don't best communicate with middle schoolers in terms of statistics. But after I took my picture with them, because they wanted a picture with a congressman, a woman came up, and she said, excuse me, sir, I'm really sorry to interrupt, but I just want you to know that your law saved my daughter's life. And then she introduced me to her 12-year-old daughter. And that's the human impact that I think we sometimes forget about the work that goes on, that goes on in Congress even during these very dysfunctional, often disillusioning times. And so we need good people to go to Washington, and we need people like you to engage with our government, to not give up, to believe that participating in democracy can make us stronger, can make us better. And that's why I'm so honored to have you here tonight. Now, I know that there is a lot of anxiety in our community about the new administration. Some people are anxiously excited, some people are quite nervous. There are certain groups of people who have already been targeted by the Trump administration. We're certainly hearing from a lot of immigrants in my office who are very concerned. Many of them who have followed all the rules, checked all the boxes, but don't know if they could just get nonetheless wrapped up in this big drag net, you know? Like a big fishing net that doesn't just catch cod, sometimes catches other things too. And so there's a lot of concern and anxiety. There's also just a bunch of basic issues that people are facing. How many people have bought eggs in the last couple of weeks? Prices are way up. I wish the administration would do something about the price of eggs, but they're actually doing the exact opposite. They're cutting off, they're forbidding the federal agencies that talk about food safety, like the FTC, from even communicating with egg farmers, so they cannot share information about the avian flu and other issues that are causing prices to go up. They're trying to deport a whole bunch of the workers who actually manage these farms. Those things will make egg prices go up more. They won't bring them down. So there's a feeling of a lot of chaos going on. Just earlier today, we heard that all sorts of federal grants were canceled. Then a couple hours ago, we heard they're back online. There's a lot of concern. I was just talking to the good mayor of Peabody, who's worried about some road projects that are, you know, shovels are in the ground, and he doesn't know if he's going to get the money to continue them. So there's some real concerns. But at the end of the day, that's why my team and I are here, to help local officials to partner with our state and local governments, but also to respond to you and your needs and concerns. And so I'll go over this again at the end, but I want you to know that we are here to help. We're here to serve you. So if you have concerns with a federal agency, with immigration, with, with just getting a passport, we do a lot of passport cases, maybe I shouldn't advertise that, because we already do a lot, then come to us and ask for help. You can, you can go through the constituent forums online, you can find us on social media, you can walk into the office. And you're also welcome to come in and just give us ideas and suggestions. Some of the best ideas that we get come from constituents. My bill to restore GI Bill benefits to the Black veterans of World War II who were denied them because of racist VA administrators. You know, I'd love to tell you that that was my idea, that actually came from a Marine who used to work for me, called me up one day and said, I, I heard about this, you should write a law. And that's what we did. So come in, you know, with your ideas, your suggestions, your critiques, your criticisms, things that we could do better. You're even allowed to come in with compliments. It doesn't always happen, but you know, you can do that too. But we really are, we really are here to help. Part of the role, I think, I mean, everyone knows I'm a Democrat, proud to be a Democrat, but part of the role for Democrats in this administration is, is not just to oppose all the bad things that this administration may try to do. That's part of the role that everyone, I think, knows. It's also to find ways to work across the aisle when we can. Among other things, that'll help us win elections two years from now, if we can show that we're a party of willing to get things done and be measured in our response. But it also means that, you know, we're going to have to pick and choose some of our battles when Republicans control everything in Washington. We're going to have to be smart about how we do things. And I'm glad to say that at the local level here in Massachusetts, I mean, I just spent a part of the afternoon with Senator Bruce Tar, who is a Republican, and, and we worked together very well. And we're going to try to continue that as much as we can, when we can, to get things done for all of you. Because I am the representative for everyone in this district, whether you voted for me, you voted for someone else, you didn't vote at all. I work for all of you, and that's something that I don't forget. So with that, let me turn it over to my team, who's running around with, with microphones, and we'll take your questions. I ask you to phrase your question in the form of a question. That's always helpful. And remember that there are a lot of people here, and we want to try to get it to as many questions as we can. So ask your question as concisely as possible, so that we can get to the next person. Thank you.
He gave very clear rules.
Sir, I appreciate your concern, but we're going in order. Okay, okay. All right. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen. So not the best example for how to get started here. We're going to be, try to be civil and, and, and go in order. There is this thing called going in order.
Yes.
So we're going to try again. Nisha, you have a question, question back there.
Hello, Mr. Moulton. My name is Chris Lanning, and I have two of Peabody's finest junior ROTC students next to me. Our question for you is, is there a way for you in Congress to try to get the J-100 scholarship reactivated? That scholarship is a scholarship that is solely for junior ROTC students that are going to be trying to get a commission in college at the next level. That scholarship was active until October of this year. The gentleman standing next to me was our representative that we would push forward to try to compete for that scholarship, and it was pulled in October.
Okay. Great question. Thank you both for signing up to serve the country. We need good young Americans to serve. You know, a lot of, a lot of people in my job get up here and try to BS their way through answers that they don't know. I'm going to be totally honest, I don't know why that scholarship was canceled, but we're going to find out. And absolutely, I'm a big supporter of junior ROTC. We have some great junior ROTC units in the district, and we'll try to get it restored. I don't, I don't know exactly what we need to do, but we'll, we'll try to figure it out. So thank you very much for asking the question.
Good evening. My name is Hope Wabuchi. I'm the honored president of North Shore Pride. I'm also the founder of North Shore Pride. I'm an active-duty Army veteran.
Great, thank you.
This isn't the Hope Show. I promise, it's a question. I'm the past commander of, first female commander, first lesbian out commander of the American Legion. And I know that you and I have spoken before, Seth, immediately after your comments, and I thank you for that conversation. My question to you, however, is, you indicated in your comments that the gay rights movement is over, the civil rights movement is over, that why do we need to use pronouns? So my, and also that we are minorities, so what does, giving the assumption that what does that matter? So my question to you is, with the rhetoric that's come out now with the new administration, what is your position on trans rights for our community? Thank you.
Sure. Well, I hope you've mischaracterized my remark, so let me start with what I said. In an interview with the New York Times after the election, we were talking about some of the things that Democrats, I think, did wrong. And one of it, which is our inability to have conversations, even debates, about contentious issues. And I use the example of transgender women competing in sports. And indeed, there are a lot of people who just tried to cancel me for even having that conversation. Now, the Olympics has that conversation. I don't know if these same people want to cancel the Olympics, or the NCAA, for example. But I think that as a party, as a political party in the United States, we should welcome debate. We should entertain it. I don't know what the exact right answer is on, on these contentious issues, but we should at least have the debate. And that's the whole point that I was making. I used other examples as well. There was a long time when Democrats said, there was no problem at the southern border, immigration isn't an issue, and then we started feeling it right here at home in our communities. There was a time when the administration said that inflation is transitory, whatever that means. It's just going to go away. Don't mind those prices that you see at the grocery store, it's just going to go away. I think we should take on those issues as well. But my record on LGBTQ rights is unimpeachable. I've gotten a perfect score from the Human Rights Campaign every single year I've been in Congress. I've been willing to stand up for rights when a lot of people weren't. I was one of the only Democrats who went on TV to denounce Nancy Mace's bathroom bill and defend the first trans member of Congress, one of the only Democrats going on TV to do that. I've been a leader in explaining why many of these Republican measures, including a recent bill that they put forward to go too far on this sports issue, are wrong, and have led the way with, for other Democrats to talk about it. And in the past few weeks, I've been approached by a number of LGBTQ rights groups, including both co-chairs of the Equality Caucus in Congress, Caucus in Congress, to have this discussion, to have this debate, so that we can have a better position, a winning position, and shut down what I think are very hateful attacks from the Trump administration on the basic right for trans people to exist, or to get health care. Those are basic civil rights that we should be able to protect. And yet, when we refuse to even engage in the issue, they win. They just carry the day on their terms, because we can't even debate it. And that's my point. None of that changes my long-held record, and it won't change it in the future. And I would say that you're going to need allies like me in the days ahead, because this is going to be tough, and it's going to get tougher. There are some people who said, okay, I see your point, Seth, but, oh, it was bad timing coming right after the election for those remarks. I just have to beg to differ, because we got to get our act together now. It's going to get worse down the road. Thank you.
Great. I have the next question back here. Seth, back here.
Oh, sorry. There you are, Nisha.
Hi, my name is Maria Blessey.
Hi, Maria.
I think we know each other, Seth.
Uh huh.
But you've been kind of avoiding my calls and emails for a few years now. Rather than throw out a litany of issues that I've tried on numerous occasions contacting your office about, for example, prioritizing housing here in Massachusetts for illegal migrants over our veterans, something that shocked me, considering you're a veteran, and also the single-issue bill that you just voted against, along with 157 other Democrats, that deport illegal criminals who violently assault women and children, and sexually. A bill that served to protect U.S. citizens, most importantly, our children, by deporting violent illegal migrants. Instead, I'll keep it more general. Over the past two and a half years, I've reached out to your office on numerous occasions. You know me by name. We went to school together. You went to school to St. John's with my brother. We attend social events, even weddings together, okay? So if you are treating people who know, who know you by name, and you run into social gatherings with, how many voices are you silencing that you don't know? You serve all of us. That's why my focus this evening, wait, that's where my focus is in this evening. The last four years have proven to us without a doubt how our federal government has failed us. Mayorkas and Director of ORR has, for four years, said that they couldn't find the 350,000 children that were missing, and within a week, President Trump found the 75,000, and he still has a lot to go, okay? It's even more concerning that our local government, where we, the people, should have the power to be seen and heard by our representatives, after all, how are you to cast your vote and legislate without knowing what we want, we, the people?
Okay. Okay. Well, let me try to answer the question, if, if there is one there, but thank you very much.
So I'm, so I'm, my question is this. Will you sit down with me after three years of begging to have your attention and, and discuss the troubling things that keep me up at night? And if not, we'll, we'll find someone else to replace you.
Okay. Well, it, it's a democratic system, and you're welcome to run against me, Maria. That, look, I'm, I want to give, look, I, no, 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 look. Okay, hold on, hold on. I think I've, I think I've, ma'am, I think that, ma'am. Ma'am, I can confidently say I'm giving you more time than anyone else here so far, so I want to take this seriously and answer your question. I'm not sure about all of your facts. You mentioned that I knew your brother at St. John's, I didn't go to St. John's, but, but there are two specifically, there are two specific things. There are two specific things that you, there are two specific things that you asked about. One is a, a bill about deporting what you said were criminals who have domestic violence convictions. The problem with this bill is that it doesn't just deport people who have domestic violence convictions, it assumes guilt. And we have a principle in the United States called innocent until proven guilty. And absolutely, those criminals should be deported, but we're going to follow the law first. And the second point, okay, it's, you, thank you, thank you. The, the second question was on, on veterans and housing. Look, I made a commitment when I got elected, I was the only member of Congress to do this at the time, to continue getting my health care at the VA. I take the concerns of veterans very, very seriously. I still go to the VA today. I would never prioritize illegal migrant housing over veterans' housing. If this is a concern for, you know, if this is a concern with state policy, then it, it could be a valid concern. I don't set state policy, but I want you to know that I would always prioritize veterans first. So thank you. Give it, give it to the gentleman with the great hat.
Thank you for these meetings.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for these meetings. There's a sign attached to the gazebo in the Beverly Commons that says, no loitering. My question to you is, can you have that sign removed? The, the Rotarian said they didn't put it up. The city of Beverly put it up. I feel that it's discriminatory to the homeless. The homeless, we can either criminalize them, or we can try to rehabilitate. That sign applies to me. In order to gaze at a gazebo, you have to loiter, and we're all, we're all subject to that crime. It's a misdemeanor. The misdemeanor can, can wind you up to 30 months in prison and a substantial fine. Thank you for your attention to that matter.
Sir, thank you very much for raising this question and, and also sharing this perspective, because I think there are a lot of people in the community who feel, as you do, about the need to take care of homeless. I mean, that's basically the inscription on the bottom of the Statue of Liberty, right? It's a long-held value in the United States that we welcome refugees, we welcome the poor, the sick, and we give them greater opportunities. There's also, of course, a lot of concern in the community, which I also share, about the influx of illegal migrants coming over the, the southern border. I'm a huge proponent of immigration. I just want people to come here legally, right? There are some people, understandably, there are, including a number of people in this administration who'd want to just cut off all immigration, period, deport the immigrants that we have. That will wreck the economy, it will dramatically increase inflation, we'll have a massive labor shortage, the price of eggs and other things will go up. But of course, the other extreme is, you know, people like yourself, who really just want to stand up for the, for the basic rights of those who are less fortunate than the rest of us. Yes, I am guilty of loitering around gazebos, I'm sure, in my life. I'm, I'm with you on that. And I, and I just, you know, I really appreciate your sharing the, these concerns and these perspectives, because at the end of the day, what we have to do is find the right balance here. I voted against that bill because I think it went too far. That was not the right balance. But I've also been willing to speak up as a Democrat and say, we do have a problem at the southern border, and we've got to address it. So thank you very much.
Seth, I have the next question up here.
Okay, so the next question is upstairs, but who's got the microphone? Up there, okay. Sorry, thank you, Nisha.
I just wanted to, you and I have a commonality of an interest in suicide prevention among young people. I work at a school. I also work with a great many transgender students. Last year, we, in November, we did the Trans Day of Remembrance vigil together, where we read over 400 names of transgender people lost to violence and suicide. One of those names was an eighth, one of, an eighth grader named Nex Benedict. When I read about Nex in the news, this time last year, I knew that I was going into school, and my kiddos were going to have read that same story. Every year, I look around our Trans Day of Remembrance vigil, and I hope and I pray that I won't see any of my students on that list next year. Now, I know that you want to play the long game, and I see the strategy that you want to engage in with Republicans, but our kids don't have that much time when they are in one of the demographics that are most likely to commit suicide. So how can we take these, this passion that you have for suicide prevention and make sure we are doing everything we can for every single student when a supportive school community, camaraderie, team sports are shown to prevent suicide? How, how can we foster that, so that we can make sure our kids get to live to see the long game that you are planning?
Sure. It's a, it's a great question. First of all, thank you for your work and, and for your concern. You know, I've met with a lot of people who've come in and, and wanted to talk about these issues in particular, and we entertain a lot of meetings in the office. We've met with trans parents who, or, trans parents of trans kids who are literally worried about whether their kids will come home from school every day. And that's what you're talking about. And it's not just parents of trans kids, there, there are a lot of immigrant kids right now who are worried that they will come home and their parent won't be there. There's a lot of trauma in today's world, and we need to do more to help that. Now, one of the things we've done with 988, to be specific, is we have increased the number of specialists who staff that line. So if you call and you're a veteran, you're immediately going to get directed to someone who specializes in dealing with veterans. We've also done that with LGBTQ youth. And it's not perfect yet, it doesn't maybe work in every single state, but in general, if you call 988 and you say, I'm an LGBTQ youth, you are going to speak with someone who specializes in those concerns, and will be specifically tailored with training to deal with those dire situations. So that's one thing that we've done in the short term, because there is an immediate need. The other reality, though, is over The other reality, though, is over the next two years, the Trump administration and the Republican Congress are going to try to push a lot of anti-trans legislation. And we can either remain silent, we can stand on a pedestal and say, "Hey, it's wrong, but we have no alternative," or we can do what I think is a smart thing, which is propose some bills that can carve off some Republicans. It's the only way, when they control the House and the Senate and the White House, that will protect basic civil rights, that will protect access to health care, that will actually have reasonable compromises on sports like the Olympics. So that's what...that's...
Is it...are you saying that we are sacrificing...
Ma'am, we're not sacrificing anybody. I'm trying to answer your question.
Then we are.
No, no, no. You had your chance to ask your question. Let me answer it. Thank you. Sir, by the way, thank you for being such a model of civility with your question as well. We...we need to make sure that we actually win these legislative debates in Washington, or laws will literally be passed that actually target trans kids. And the third thing I would ask for...the third thing I would ask for is have some grace in civility. Because you know what? You might not have liked my comments. Trust me. I say things all day long that people don't like, all right? You may not have liked the way I phrased something or whatever. But here are two options. Take the Salem School Committee or whatever, who was so quick to denounce what I said, right? And they've been in the news a lot for...it's kind of...they've really helped prove my point about the Democrats being unwilling to have a debate about these issues, which has been helpful to my argument. But it was not helpful to trans kids. They could have picked up the phone and said, "Hey, Seth, are you changing your position? Are you suddenly not supportive of trans kids?" And I would have said, "Absolutely not. Here's what I'm thinking. Here's why I'm making this case." And then they could have come out and said, "Your congressman supports you." But instead, they chose to make a political point by denouncing me, which, fine, like, I'll be denounced all day long if I need to be, right? I don't...I take this job because I don't mind criticism. But what would really have served trans kids better? To show them that they have an ally as their one vote in the United States Congress? Or to try to make a political point against me? That's where a little bit of grace and civility can get us. And you know what? If you'd had that conversation and still disagreed with me, then fine, go ahead and issue your statements. But really think about the impact of what you're doing. I think that would help, too.
I'm on this side now? I'm on the balcony.
Oh, another's from the balcony.
I'm over here now.
Okay.
Ben Webb, just regular guy. Congressman Moulton, since taking office, Donald Trump has mass pardoned loyalist insurrectionists, bullied the media into compliance, threatened our allies, revoked birthright citizenship, begun mass deportations, and threatened to deport American citizens. Shockingly, this is an incomplete list of actions that he has taken which mirror exactly those taken by Adolf Hitler when he dismantled the Weimar Republic and began the Holocaust. Can you explain to us why no single one of these actions, nor the accumulation of them, has been enough to elicit a nationwide call to civil action from the Democratic Party? What step in Trump's version of the final solution are we waiting for? Many of us are looking for bold leadership from our party and not seeing it. If you call for civil disobedience, I will join you in the street. If you call for boycotts, I will go without, for the sake of our future. What further horror must Trump manifest for us to hear that call?
It's quite a well-prepared question for an ordinary guy. There's not a single thing that you mentioned that I disagree with or that I don't have the same concerns about. There's not a single thing on that list that I don't think is a huge problem, morally, legally, or both. And you could hear in the room a lot of enthusiasm for your call to, "Hey, get to the streets" or whatever. Look, we're in a democracy. You can make that call, I can make that call. After the first Trump election, there was a huge march on Washington. In fact, we rented a train car from Amtrak just to bring a whole bunch of people down to the Women's March. Some of you may have been on that train with us. I don't know exactly why there hasn't been that same kind of organic reaction, millions of people, Democrats, descending on Washington the way there was back in 2016. I don't think that, you know, my speech here tonight is going to change that, but that's something that we should think about. I do think that there are a lot of Democratic leaders, and I'm not here to, you know, just defend our leadership, but I think there are people like Hakeem Jeffries, who I'm very supportive of in the House of Representatives, who believes that that kind of strategy is, at the end of the day, not going to get us the wins that we need. And that's why he's not...I mean, in a much higher position than me, with a much bigger audience, not calling for that kind of action. I don't speak for him in saying that, but I'm just doing the best I can to try to answer your question, which is fundamentally, why is this not happening? You know, why is there not more sort of widespread protest? I think this is probably something that historians will write about for a while. But a question that a lot of people are asking is just, you know, what can I do to help? You know, where can I pitch in? What can I do to help? There's obviously going to be points in the course of the next two years where civil disobedience would help, or some of you are lawyers. You know, you can try to help through the legal system. It's amazing sometimes how, you know, individual Americans can start legal claims that actually get traction with the federal government. But I believe the single most important thing that Democrats can do is get our act together so we start winning again two years from now and take back the House and maybe take back the Senate. Now, this is not a political rally. This is not a political rally, so I'm not here to just, like, recruit for Serve America, which is an organization I started that's had more impact on Democratic elections than pretty much any Democratic organization in the entire nation. Take a look at that, if I can put in a quiet plug. But I think that is some of the most important work that we need to do. And fundamentally, when I ask these tough questions, when I raise these contentious issues, some of which has, you know, generated some of the questions here tonight, it's because I want to start winning races again, you know? Because we need to have a check on this. And frankly, even if you're an independent, you know, this district is majority independent, unregistered. You ought to have some balance in Washington, where the Republicans and Trump don't control everything. I think that would be healthy for our democracy. So, not here in this official town hall tonight, but in a lot of political events over the course of the next two years, you can bet that I will once again be heavily engaged in winning races and winning back the House. One quick statistic, in a bad year for Democrats, we lost the Senate, we still stayed in the doghouse in the House, we lost the White House. Serve America had an 89% win rate. Pay attention to what we're doing. Okay, thank you. Who's next? Sorry, I'm looking...you're all looking at me, but I'm not making the calls here. It's...okay. Hey, sir.
Good evening, Seth. This is Bob Skilstad, a PBD resident. I had a quick question for the audience. How many of you believe you have a constitutional right of suffrage to vote for the presidency? Quick show of hands. How many of you believe you have a constitutional right of suffrage to vote for the presidency? Okay? You don't. You have a state right. It's a state's right.
That's a question.
Well, my question...okay, my question is, there's a lot of confusion about the fact that we have a disqualified president under the Fourteenth Amendment, Section 3. That still has not been lifted, if I'm correct. So since it hasn't been lifted and since the Supreme Court kicked it to Congress, it feels like we're kind of gliding on that, but to me, as a veteran who took an oath to support and defend the Constitution, it's kind of a critical matter, and I won't ever let that go. He's not my president, and he will not be, until...until the ruling by the Supreme Court, which basically took a states' rights issue from the state of Colorado. The judges there determined that they believed he was involved in instigating an insurrection, which I think most common sense people do. I'd like to propose that you create legislation that sets a standard to a civil standard, a preponderance of evidence, starting with a probable cause to begin an investigation, and make it law, so that we can have something actionable, because that's what the Supreme Court, even though they really should know, because they were messing in states' rights, made it now necessary.
Yeah, so let me try to answer the question. Thank you very much for raising it. I am not a lawyer or a constitutional scholar, but I certainly share a sentiment. And it is kind of amazing, a little bit of counterfactual view of history, how things could have gone differently. The prosecutors feel that they could have convicted Trump on his efforts to disrupt the election and only threw it out because he became elected president. He talks and brags about having a huge mandate, and yet his win in the popular vote was significantly smaller than Biden's win, than...actually, than Clinton's win in 2016, ironically, in the popular vote. So this could have gone the other way, but to the best of my understanding, as someone who doesn't have a law degree, this is where we are right now, and there's not, you know, a clear way to get around it. When you started talking about universal suffrage, I actually thought you were going to talk about the Electoral College and how everyone around here wants to vote for president but kind of really knows that their vote doesn't really count. I think that's wrong. I think that everybody in America should have an equal say in who votes and who becomes the next president. And although it wouldn't have changed the result in this election, it would have changed the result in several prior elections. And that is certainly a change that I have advocated for for a long time, and I think it's something that we should see. So, thank you.
Good evening, Congressman Moulton. I'm a retired US Army First Sergeant, and like yourself, I receive all of my health care through the VA. I have just two quick points that I would like to encourage you to do, and I know that if your office hasn't already, you probably will receive the priority goals from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And under budget, to fully fund relevant programs for veterans, service members, and their families, and specifics are listed, I won't list them for you, but you can kind of guess. And health care to ensure service members and veterans receive timely access to high-quality health care without increased cost sharing by the veterans and families. And when we go to visit our members of Congress from Massachusetts in March and we talk about these points, your office has always been supportive. Myself, as an individual of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, a proud veteran, always have received the best support from, if the Senator was available, to speak with us, if not his staff. So I ask you for your continued support of our veterans, and I'm very heartened to hear that some veterans are here today, speaking with the passion that we all had when we signed up and joined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, the quick answer, of course, is yes. You can count on that, as you know. Thank you for your long years of service to our community and to our veterans. It's meant a lot here in Massachusetts, and we love working with you, and we'll continue to do so. It's important to note that among the federal programs that Trump cut earlier today, the funding that he stopped, were a bunch of programs at the VA and a bunch of things for veterans. I know hard to imagine that coming from a draft dodger, but that's how it goes sometimes. Yeah.
Next question up here, straight back.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Representative Moulton.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Mason. I live in Beverly, and I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace Boston and also a member of North Shore for Palestine. I'm not speaking for those organizations, and I do have a question for you.
Thank you.
I've had an opportunity with a number of people from those organizations and a number of other organizations on the North Shore to speak to you about what has occurred over the last 16 months in Gaza, that many organizations have concluded was a genocide. And I know you've been very critical of the strategy and the tactics of the Israeli government, and yet any time you have had an opportunity to vote for an embargo or a halt on sending military aid to Israel, you have voted yes instead of no. I'm particularly concerned that even though there is a ceasefire now, many well-respected analysts have said, once all of the Israeli hostages are returned to Israel, that Israel will relaunch an invasion of Gaza and continue the genocide. So my question for you is, what are you going to do about it? Because as an American citizen, I feel that we are complicit in this genocide. I'm calling upon you, of course, to halt military aid to Israel, but I'm ready to hear your answer to that question. And thank you.
Thank you very much for... This is an incredibly difficult and contentious issue. I appreciate your activism, and you know, I got to give you a compliment that I don't get to give out that often, which is that you're an activist who disagrees with me on some things, and you very accurately characterize my position. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the dialogue that we are able to have, because there are ways in which I have continued to support our ally, Israel, and there are ways that I've been incredibly critical of what they've been doing over the last year, particularly in the way that they've carried out their campaign in Gaza. And I will point out that, you know, as a veteran who fought in a counterinsurgency and someone who disagrees with the tactics, in particular, the degree to which innocent civilians are being killed at an astonishing rate in Gaza, well, in the wake of the ceasefire, I mean, literally within hours, we saw uniformed armed Hamas troops back in the streets, which completely proves my point, that Israel is not succeeding in its counterinsurgency campaign. So a lot of civilians have died, and Hamas is still in operation. And that raises some very serious concerns, or it certainly should raise some serious concerns even among strong supporters of Israel, about what they're doing and how this is going. I also share your concerns about the humanitarian situation. At the end of the day, the solution to this crisis, that's really been a generational war, is to ensure that whether you're an Israeli or a Palestinian, you have the same rights. You have the same freedoms. You have the same guarantee of safety and security. And only when those things are achieved can either side be peaceful. Because I don't want to see another innocent child killed in Gaza. I also don't want to see an innocent child born today to Israeli parents die in the same war 20 years from now when he or she goes to serve. So we have a lot of work to do, and we can have some debate about the particulars of certain bills. Some of these bills, I think, just go too far. Some of these bills, I don't think are ultimately productive at the end of the day. There are other measures. I've written some very critical letters to the administration and to the Israeli Embassy and others about what they're doing. So I've not been just one-sided about this. We can have some very legitimate debates about exactly how we get to where we want to go. But I think that you and I do share a lot in common about where we think this should end up. This has gone on for way too long. We need to have peace. So thank you for your advocacy for peace. Hold on, where am I going next?
Question up here.
Oh, sorry.
Hi. Hi, my name is Caitlin. I live in Lynn. My question is about the federal funding freeze that was on, but now it's off. But I'm assuming that we're going to get a lot of this on-and-off kind of thing going on. Few parts to my question. Don't talk into the...right in there. Go like that. Okay.
Yeah, swallow that mic.
First of all, how closely are you working with the governor to ensure, you know, that programs in Massachusetts are, you know, running as smoothly as possible? And also, what can you... And also, what can you do, or what are you doing along with your colleagues in Congress to ensure that, you know, federal funds, of which Massachusetts sure pays a whole lot of, right, continue to come, so to support research, education, and social services in our state?
Great question. Well, the last time I spoke to the governor was yesterday afternoon, so we are absolutely, as a whole delegation, working very closely with our state counterparts. I had a meeting with our local state officials, city officials, just before this, this town hall tonight. So we're going to do everything we can to coordinate on these issues, because it's going to require a lot of coordination and problem solving, because we don't know exactly what's going to be coming down the pike. I, I do know, and I, and I said this to everyone I've spoken to thus far, to expect a bit of chaos. I think there will be things like, we're ending birthright citizenship. Oh, wait a minute, that's unconstitutional. So it kind of goes back and forth, and it's easy to get lost in the chaos, but that's why we're here to help. And we understand, as a team, how critical the federal funding is to Massachusetts. Massachusetts, by the way, your tax dollars contribute a lot of the money to the federal government that then comes back to us, so we also want to make sure you're getting a return on your investment. There are a lot of states that receive more than they give. That's not the case for Massachusetts. And, and there are a lot of federal programs here that are really important to, to education and many other things, so we're going to make sure we keep those going. One of the specific concerns that I heard this evening was about the lack of federal support for immigrant housing. And we know that that's been a big issue for Massachusetts. The state budget has had to absorb billions of dollars of costs for these migrants who have come into the Commonwealth, and that's a place where the federal government should do more to help. Now, in the, the context of this, of course, is that the, the new president wants to dramatically cut taxes for the wealthiest corporations and the wealthiest Americans, the crypto folks and other big business and tech people like that, while at the same time spending more money on defense and other things. This will dramatically increase our deficit. There was a time when Republicans were fiscal hawks and they cared about the deficit. That doesn't seem to be the case under Trump. This is another big picture problem here, because I have a feeling, based on his business history, that he's perfectly fine running up the debt, bankrupting the country, just like he's bankrupted so many of his companies, and then handing the bill to the next generation. That's something we've got to be vigilant about as well.
All right, last question over here.
Right here. My name is Matthew Cassi.
Wait, wait, sorry, where are you? Where are you? Oh, over here.
Thank you, Congressman, for taking the time. So you said before that you want the Dems to get their act together, and I think most people in this room would agree with that, but I don't hear a clear strategy as to how that's going to happen. For years now, we've heard Democrats say, we need to work together with the Republicans to get things done, but they've made it clear that they have no interest in working with Democrats, especially now that they have more power than ever. You previously run on a platform of being a new generation of leader, so my question is, why aren't you meeting my generation where we are, in supporting real populist policies based on progressive values?
Your generation just swung towards Trump by about 20 points, so you're not a monolithic representation of your generation. In fact, we saw some of the biggest swings towards Trump in blue cities. Massachusetts, as a Commonwealth, swung more towards Trump than many other states in the Union. So it's not just simply the case that by going all to the left, by sort of being the next Bernie Sanders, we're going to win over your generation. It's a lot, it's a lot more complicated. Well, look at the numbers. There's a thing called statistics. But, okay, so, again, civility. I would like to answer your question. You, you read your question off, that you'd obviously prepared in advance. I'm just going to give you an off-the-cuff answer, okay? There's three things that I have advocated for to reform the Democratic Party in the immediate term. The first is that we need to do a lot more listening and a lot less preaching. You sounded very preachy as you were telling me what to do. I don't think that's a strategy to win over voters, because I heard a lot of Americans say to me, I know that guy's crazy, but God, you Democrats are just so out of touch. You're so out of touch. You know, and when I say something that 80% of America agrees with, and I get the kind of backlash that you've seen, like, that's an example. We've got to be willing to meet Americans where they are. Yes, that's your generation, including folks who are all over the map. Seen a dramatic rise of, on college campuses of Republican clubs, or it's just an article in the New York Times, the Boston Globe, about that a few days ago. But we've got to meet Americans where they are, and listen genuinely to their concerns, and stop being this party that says that if you disagree with me, you're not only wrong, you're a bad person. I don't think that's a strategy to be a majority party. The second thing I think we need to do is demonstrate that we can get some disruptive leadership in here to actually change that. It's one thing for one member of Congress to say, we need to listen more. It's a very different thing for a new chairman of the Democratic Party to come in and say, hey, we're making some wholesale changes, so that we actually do listen to more Americans. And by the way, there are some places where I think we should be more progressive. An example is, you know, I think that Trump has gotten, here's an interesting historical example. Clinton came to power in the 1990s essentially by responding to the success of Reaganomics, and saying Democrats need to be pro-business as well. There's an interesting argument that Democrats today should respond to Trump's economic populism by saying, we can be economic populists as well, maybe with some different values and different priorities. That's a very good argument. And in fact, one of the debates that I've called for having in our party is really what the future of our economic policy should be. And I think that's a very legitimate debate to have, and it might end up that we're actually more populist, more progressive than we are today, at the same time opposing these massive tax cuts for billionaires that Trump and the Republicans are currently pushing through Congress. But I think we need some disruptive leadership in the party to really show that we're serious about having those debates, and actually serious about changing. And so the third thing I'll say is that we've got to have leaders in our party who have political courage. And the definition of political courage is not standing up to the other party. You know, every example in Ted Saran's, I'm sorry, John F. Kennedy's book, Profiles in Courage, God, not many people got that joke. This is usually a well-educated craft. Ted Saran was a speechwriter, he was a ghostwriter. Every example in that book was a United States senator who stood up to his own party, not to the opposition. That's the definition of political courage. That's what's so lacking amongst Republicans today, right? I never thought I would stand before you in Peabody and say, the latest, greatest example of political courage in the Republican Party comes from Mitch McConnell when he voted against Pete Hegseth. But he deserves a little credit for that. Kind of crazy, right? But I know a lot of Republican senators. And I know a lot of Republican senators do not think that Pete Hegseth should be the next Secretary of Defense, but they couldn't find the political courage to vote against him. But we need to find that in our party, too. And one way you do that is you empower people who don't just come from the safest districts in the country. You put people in leadership positions, like my friend Jared Golden, Marine up in Maine, who holds the single most Trump district of any Democrat in the entire nation. He gets criticized a lot, too. But he's doing something that many other Democrats can't do. And he wins a majority of voters in a district that votes majority for Trump. Those are some lessons that we should learn. Phil, look, I, I'm not claiming to have all the answers, but those are three concrete steps that I think that we need to take as a party. And that, you may not agree with that strategy, you may have a different strategy, but that's my answer to what the strategy should be going forward. So thank you for asking the question. Okay. It's, it's all Kelly's fault, she's, she's giving me the, the sign. We're actually, we're actually well overdue. My kids are about to go to bed, and I promised them I would read a book before they do so, which means I've got about three minutes to, to cut this off and get home before they're in bed at 7:30. But listen, listen, I want to just conclude by thanking you. I know it's late, and some people have got to go. Thank you very much for coming out, for participating in our democracy, for being a part of moving our country forward in these contentious times. Have a wonderful night. Let us know what we can do to help.